I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off of ivory position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harvison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we give you the praise and the thanks for today. This is the day you've made. It's such a beautiful day and we just thank you. We certainly don't deserve your blessing and your grace. We ask your wisdom today in dealing with city business. God, I pray that you'll be with each council member, that you'll give them the knowledge and the courage they need to make those right choices. God, thank you for the mayor and his administration. Just pray as a city, as we move forward, we'll keep our eyes on you and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held on June the 8th.
Strong move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of account for the week of June the 4th through the 10th.
Strong move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Do we have any proclamations? Okay, at this time, we will have a presentation by Mr. Hooks from the IDA. This is a special presentation and just so that you all know, it's about a 30-minute, maybe longer, presentation.
Y'all ready? That was interesting. Thank you, Madam President. This presentation is not something we would typically do, but I wanted to show it to the city council in light of kind of the circumstance of what's going on. This is basically a playbook of how we've been doing business the last two years, some of our programs, some of the things we're looking forward to for the next two years. One of the reasons that it remains typically would be confidential is because you don't want our competitors knowing what we're doing. It's not just confidential in that you're recruiting a project, it's confidential in that you don't want what your competitors, your competitors to know what your program and what you're working on would be. This will be the third time I've shown this presentation. My board has seen it, as you know, I have an 18-member board from around the county, an independent board, and the city council has seen it this morning in executive session because I thought it was important if there was something that you did not feel comfortable with me showing that we take out, but nothing, we've left all our slides in. And I've presented this to my board as of April this year. I've been here two years. I know it may seem like a lifetime to some, but really, it's been two years and it's been a tough two years because of COVID and some other things, but I want to just walk through. When I took this job two years ago, there were some real issues that we were facing. The former director had been deceased for four years. He had been ill before that. The IDA was basically doing business in a 1980s model. The servers were so old that Microsoft sent us a note that if we didn't continue to upgrade them, they would not service us anymore, which we did. The, there was no social media, we had to redo the website. We went through all of that and this first slide just is kind of an indicator of that. We co-sourced our logo, which you can see, came through Australia and to, the artist was actually German, so that gave us a little innovative in some kind of where we were going from that perspective. So I move on to that. That was kind of the first thing we faced. Also, if you will remember, the county had started a opposite, a separate development authority, so we had competition internally. That worked out as well. So for the first six months, those were the things I was dealing with. So that really gives us an 18-month period. In that timeframe, also, we relooked at our targeted industries. The advanced manufacturing, automotive, aviation and metalworking were the four targeted industries that IDA had worked on. The board included healthcare from some work I had been doing at UAB with the state and we also added food and farming because I think that's where we're going in the global economy that farm-to-table and moving back into an economy where you're feeding yourself locally is important. And so we added healthcare and food and farming to our targeted industries. We didn't stop there. We also divided Gadsden, Edgewall County into 11 distinct industrial development areas coinciding with our targeted industries. Each of these have targeted traits. Within Gadsden, you had East Gadsden, which would include Goodyear and the hospitals. You had the Gadsden Industrial Park, which is the Old Republic Steel Site, the airport inside the fence and airport outside the fence. There's a note on this one in that inside the fence is a misnomer to some extent because inside the fence really means what the airport authority owns and outside the fence means what the city of Gadsden owns. So there's a couple of parcels that may be outside the fence, but are really, we continued them inside the fence. Note that food and farming was one of the targeted markets that we included in there as well. And then Nakalula Falls in the downtown area, which I think Opportunity Zone is open for healthcare and entertainment district as well. But also note that outside the city of Gadsden, we also have done work in Atala, the Edgewall County mega site, Hoax Bluff, Rainbow City. I think one of the things we probably need to do out of this presentation is add Glencoe. I didn't do it because I didn't want to change any of the ads from my board meeting to the council or to this meeting, but Glencoe has a new mayor that's pretty active, working industrial recruitment and it makes some sense to add Glencoe as a 12th component to this and you'll see that a little later. One of the things I wanted to do, and I'm talking pretty fast because I do try, want to try to narrow this down, this is really about a two-hour presentation, as you saw in the executive session this morning and we had to cut it off, but just kind of our work through ads. As, most of you will recall, we had Modus early on. This is an ad we did after it. Modus has since told us that they're not coming due to having constraints with COVID and also having problems getting their plants back up and running due to loss of contracts. And while Modus was about two-thirds of the way complete when I got here, we spent that first six months putting Modus together, finalizing it. We ran into some hiccups with it, but we were able, environmental hiccups with it, but we were able to work those out and to get a location. And as you all recall, we had a big, huge event at the venue, the governor showed up, big exciting time. Next project that we worked on, and this also went internationally, was the Cook Food Meal in Atala, hold a billion grains of feed. And this was an exciting project. The governor was back in town within a six-month period for two of the largest industrial announcements in the state in Gadsden and Edgewall County. I think it's important that the citizens of Edgewall County look at this one and a couple of more projects and realize that the city of Gadsden has been very gracious in their funding to the IDA to allow us to do this work for the entire county. The, this project got international attention. The design of the rail coming in is extremely important and Dr. Bob Martin, Rob Martinez, who is the head of business development at North Fork Southern, since retired, came down at this meeting and this is just an email I sent back to Rob thanking him for coming. I knew him in prior lives when he was Director of Transportation for the State of Virginia and served in President Bush's administration. But, but through reacquainting with Rob and what we were doing at the Cook groundbreaking, we had the ability to take him and show him the mega site on behalf of the county and to also show him the old Republic Steel facility, which they still have Siskin Yard that comes into. Out of that, it expedited getting the county commission for the Little Canoe Creek mega site, $2.7 million in site improvement from North Fork Southern. It also helped expedite getting Alabama Power Company to continue expansion with their subdivision, substation at the mega site. And it also included another visit back, which Dr. Martinez met with Gadsden officials and county officials in expanding what they had been working on as a north-south corridor from Mobile to Birmingham, developing rail sites, and they extended it to include the mega site for their national marketing campaign. And those are some of the things we do that the public never really sees that we're involved in. We also have been working with OmniTrax, which is the tracks that run east and west to east, really coming through, and I guess east to west tracks run both ways, coming through Gadsden proper, going through Glencoe, and I think this, you'll see, is another reason we need to add Glencoe back in. For the rail-ready sites with North Fork and OmniTrax, just as a side note, the people in the rail industry don't want to see industrial sites that are rail-served go to non-rail-serving users. They want to make sure that you get rail-service users in those rail sites. You understand why? We've targeted 11 sites in Edgewall County. They've graded them by color. Green is best, yellow medium, red is to be developed. There's probably four of those sites that'll wind up as green sites as we continue to work with OmniTrax doing that. Glencoe has a site to do that on the tracks as well. And then we've also added, and I think this one is important as well, Bryce Thomas Radiator bought a company in California. We helped them with an incentive package to move it to Rainbow City on Sutton Bridge Road, a facility that employs at least 30 people now, if not more, and they are one of the world's largest specialized radiator manufacturers in the country. One of the things, just to back up a little bit, to note that in all of our ad work that we've done, we've done this for social media presence as well as print media. This is an article that's hard for you to see here, but was written on as component for food and farming in Business Facilities Magazine. One of the things is we do our ad packaging. It allows us to do content providing, editorial content providing and we've written those. That's another thing we do as well. We've done one on advanced manufacturing, several. This is just a quick deal that we did as a write-up for the ads for, I think it was 100 words, on manufacturing training in Alabama and we provided that for them. This is another ad that we've run and one of the things that occurred to me, we really do our marketing external to the county, Gadsden and the county citizens and Gadsden citizens really never get to see this because we're recruiting people back in. And so this one is one that we did. We knew that Chattanooga, Huntsville, Birmingham and Atlanta were winning an award and we did the ad that said you can locate in one of those cities or you can locate in Gadsden and do business with all those cities. One of the things I kind of left out in starting this presentation, we really do three things for the city of Gadsden and Edgewall County and the municipalities included for economic development. One of those is recruitment of new industries and retention of existing industries. The second is workforce development. The third is entrepreneurship. We'll have a slideshow presentation for what we're doing on both of those as well. This one just deals with industrial recruitment and retention. We also have been involved in advanced manufacturing. You'll see this again, this is an ad that we did for the site that you see here is, let me play with my toys. This site here is at the corner of Airport Road and Steel Station Road. It's a 134-acre track. I'll talk about it a little bit more further. The also, this ad, again, designed for social media as well as print. You will note that I think this is one of, a real important ad because we were able to capture Gadsden stayed in it with Intiva, Fair Automotive, Narmco, Indicator Plastics. All four of those have done expansions within the last year, of which you, this council, have voted on giving them abatements to do such. And then Color Craft, we hope to do something with them in the future, but the expansions have gone very well in this last year. We also focused, as I said, on food and farming. That's an ad that we ran in a trunk ad, which if you don't know what that is, is a center full, centerfold. And I think this one's important to see how we've tried at the IDA to target between the smaller farm-to-table industry and also the big mega food processors within the county. And I think it's the combination of those two that has the potential to make us a vital link in the agricultural community throughout the, not just the nation, but the globe. Poultry is the largest industry in Edgewall County. It's the largest employer. If you want to think otherwise, feel free to do so, but by far, they're the largest, almost double anything else in the city. And when you get to what I was discussing about the retention and recruiting new business, the key to that is having inventory. We have one area within the city of Gadsden that has potential for real solid growth in green space and it is around the airport. What you're looking at here is a view of the Modus site. It's a green site, clear, serviceable, site-ready. And although Modus is not coming, we have an advantaged site that's, this is the, one of the premier sites, quite frankly, in the entire state. But again, that's 25 acres at the airport. This again is an overhead shot of the airport, authority property. And then here you'll see the other three sites that are really there, what we call the Advanced Technology Park, what we call the Hangar Road Site, and what we call the lake sites, really what we call it. There is 155 acres here. There's 134 acres here. There is 170 acres here, but most of that's lakes, so there's really about 140 acres. And then this is what Rainbow City calls its industrial park behind Tyson. This is the 155-acre site that you just saw, Hangar Road Site. That was done as an ad to do, send out electronically to site selection consultants to work on. One of the things at some point, to try to put in perspective, and I think this is the 155-acre sites with 52 acres divided off of it, to put in perspective, what we've been working with, with the Pilgrims Pride Site and that is basically in this area here, which is 88 acres currently. Pilgrims came to us in December of 2019 from the state of Alabama as a project that was being recruited among multiple states in a competitive project. We were asked to compete. We showed them multiple sites in the county. They actually liked a site at the mega site the best. That site has 140 acres. If you're familiar with the mega site that the county owns at all, there's a little over 1,000 acres, 1,100 acres. There's 140 acres of that north of the railroad track. There's 1,000 acres of it south of the railroad track. And so we were only talking about the 140 acres north of the railroad track. This was in December of 19th that this started. It worked, it kind of worked through. At the same time, what people don't know is we were working another project at the same time, and we, keep in mind, we're working Pilgrims at the mega site in December of 19, January of 2020. Then we're working another project, which is called Project Sunshine, which was 100 and, let's see, $73 million, $73 million with 40, 149 jobs at $17 an hour, looking at this site on Hangar Road Site at the airport. This is a rough layout. They would have taken 50, excuse me, these 55 acres left us with a 20-acre site here for the city to continue to develop, plus an 88-acre site here. They requested road as incentive. They requested water and sewer because there was enough, not enough water and sewer capacity to service them. We were the, this was, they looked at seven different states. We narrowed it down. We were the top site in Alabama and it was narrowed down to us, Tennessee and Georgia. And then the project, the company killed the project. But in the meantime, what happened at the mega site was the county was prepared to bring the mega site in, the, working with Pilgrims to bring Pilgrims to the mega site. The county and the Gadsden City Water Board jointly did a water project study, an expensive one, to determine whether or not you could get water and sewer, the capacity that Pilgrims needed to the mega site and if so, how much it would cost. That number was in excess of $20 million. At that point, and that was probably sometime in May of 2020, I'm guessing, May, early June, the Pilgrims Pride, along with the county commission, all said, it won't work here. It's too much money. Water Board said it's $20 million capital investment, it's too much to go to develop it. The county and Pilgrims Pride came back to us at the IDA and said, find them a site. We don't want to lose them. We want them in the county. We had already looked at sites all over the county. We had not found something suitable for them, but this site had not been worked on because that was prior to Sunshine coming. And then when we started with Sunshine, they were talking about taking the whole 155 acres while Pilgrims, and while at the same time, we were working Pilgrims at the mega site. So sometime in June, July of 2020, keep in mind that this is about the time that we're in the midst of COVID. We are in the midst of Goodyear closing. A troubled time for the city as I saw it and the county, based on what we were working on. And we have the two largest projects in the state working, working on this one site, which we could have done a road to service all three of these sites, water and sewer to service all three of these sites. This is a rendering of potential hangars at the airport and a potential expansion of the runway at the airport. We already have 6,800 feet, which is one of the largest, longest runways in the state, but it would expand it to 7,000 with all this fitting in. At the same time, the Water Board was working to do a revitalization of, you see in the red here, this project, that was about a $3 million project. They had about $1,790,000 in EDA grants. We had worked with the Water Board to secure letters of support for these and about this, with this going on, when we had, when we were working Sunshine and Pilgrims on this site with no water and sewer, you can see the green line and the, I think that's a black line, that are water and sewer potentials that would also allow us to pick up this 134-acre development, this 155-acre development and this 140-acre development with water and sewer. That expansion was going to cost $2 million, of which there was a million-dollar Appalachian Region Commission grant that would have funded it. You see this line here? That's hangars at the airport currently that Rainbow City Water supplies. These projects here are in Rainbow City. These manufacturers are in Rainbow City, but they're on Gadsden Sewer, which was supporting, having to do all of this, or helping cause having to do all this development up here that Gadsden was having to do. In my due diligence in this process, you look, this is the, and I can't see these numbers from up there, but there's, this is the mega site. Within a half a mile, there's 17 residents roughly. I think that's the number. Within a mile, there's 35 residents roughly. If you go to the, if you go to the Hangar Road Site, you double your number of houses within, I mean, you cut your number of houses in half. There's seven within a half a mile and there's 36 within a mile. That number on the last one, keep in mind, I think that's, at the mega site, there were 14 and 76. At the airport site, there's seven and 35. So the mega site is twice as residentially packed, dense as the airport site. This is again, another, the 140-acre site. This part here is probably not developable. This is. And this is advanced manufacturing site. This is another piece of what advanced manufacturing site. This is, this is kind of the premier site that we're working on, trying to get to develop. We've, with water and sewer coming in and with what was going on at the Hangar Road Site, we view this as dividing it up into four to five tracks with 34 acres, Think Commons Industrial Park and Research Park and Huntsville, Kerbin Gutters, Leaving the Lakes and all the amenities that go with it. In that process, and this is the area that we would look at doing what I'm going to describe to you next, in that process, we've looked at building a 53,000-square-foot spec building. This is one that's in Jasper with a capacity to, with five loading doors with a capacity to expand, blow out the back and expand it to 100,000 square feet. This is the fifth building that Jasper has built. They've learned all the tricks, like you put gravel flooring in instead of leaving it dirt because the dirt floor sends moisture to the roof and rusts the metal.
This is actually our fourth installment of the Spec Bone Program here in this community. We've been real proud of our relationship. We have extreme confidence in this community to install this program and success is proven by the jobs and capital investments that's brought to the community.
Community has relied on the coal industry for years and years and years. Been very good to this community, but the coal industry's going away. We're in a position now that we have to re-unbelt ourselves. And this building will allow us to bring jobs, bring diversification to what's happening here in our industrial park. And then at the end of the day, your tax base drives what you can do in your city, how you fund your school systems, how you provide recreational opportunities, that sort of thing. So really hard to grasp the far-reaching impact that this building will have on this city.
It eliminates a lot of the construction time. I mean, it can cut, cut the construction timeline for, you know, six to nine months. And a lot of these projects, when they come in, they're on a real short deadline. The flexibility that a facility like this provides is just tremendous. I mean, you can lay it out however you want to. Truck docks are in place. Truck docks are in place, but doors aren't cut in, so you got the flexibility to put them where you need them. It's expandable. It's 53,000 square feet now, but there's an expansion pad already at the rear to allow the building to double.
Well, we talk about account development and out recruiting and marketing, and certainly that's important, but if you don't have product, if you don't have a place for these companies to go for industrial prospects, it's really kind of a moot point. Ultimately, real estate is going to drive the local decision long term, so it's important to have the right product out there that's attractive to companies.
Means opportunity. This is our fifth spec building and the fourth time we've been able to tap into the Alabama Power Spec Building Program, which has been a real blessing for us. And, you know, when you have a facility like this, it just creates opportunities. We actually started seeing projects wanting to come in and look at this facility before we had steel going vertical. So that's kind of neat. We've seen a lot of projects recently. And of course, with the opening now or the actual completion of I-22, we really anticipate that trend to continue.
We have a 400 acre industrial park here. The challenge is that topographically, Walker County is challenged, and it costs a great deal of money to prepare sites. But with a spec building like this, then you can prepare smaller sites, and we have the funding to do that. And it's my hope that, in the not-too-distant future, that maybe we're preparing another site for a spec building.
I mean, this really be used as a marketing tool. You certainly hope they locate in your community, but ultimately, if they like the building, but really love the community, feel like they'd take a site next door, then they just, it's used as an attractant to bring people in to look.
Madam President, this shows us kind of what our competitors are doing and what we need to do to be in the game. And I think it's an indication of not all the work, but some of the work we've been doing for the last two years to get us in a competitive mode, and I hope you and the council are pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. We will continue with our agenda. Unfinished business, there's no action necessary regarding the resolution on 2214 Sampson Avenue in District Six. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. The next item, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1322 Council Avenue in District Five. We have Demetra Cass, subject to right of redemption of any, of Tyrone Fears and Leon Thomas in the state of Alabama being the last known owners. I think I just go ahead and discuss with Mr. Harbison, so you can go ahead at this point.
Madam President, I am Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We began to look into this case as it was being prepared to present to the council. There is one additional parcel and parcel owner that incorporates part of this building. It's a very complex issue. What we're going to do is ask the council to table this indefinitely and give us an opportunity to pull this other parcel and property owner in. And at the appropriate time, once due process is played out, we'll present the case in totality to the council. Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to table indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an indefinite period, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table indefinitely.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 3101 Sampson Avenue in District Six, Long Star 21 LLC in care of Vicki Gregerson Smith being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, I'm David Livingston. I'm an attorney for Gary Dykes, who's the owner of the property. He lives in Houston. He's asked me to come here today. He thought he had some people that were working on the property, but apparently not. I've talked to Mr. Harbison about this. We would request a 30-day extension on this so we can get people to start work on this property. He does tend to, intend to get it into compliance.
Is there anyone to speak in favor of this resolution? Excuse me, did you want to speak?
Yeah, she's going to speak after me, if that's okay, Madam President.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we filed this case in August of 2020. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. Actually, today, the house is unsecure. The back door is open, which brings the neighbor into the situation. I'll let her explain that this time.
Okay, if you'll give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Ashley Pham. My address is 3103. I live right next door to the property.
Okay, could you pull your mic down a little bit so we can hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Um, I was just wanting to speak about this. I have a four-year-old that back when, right as soon as this started happening, he found needles in his yard. Because I let my kids play around and everything, there was needles in this yard. We have too many issues with that property. There are people going in and out of that house just about every day. The people that Gary did have working on the house, they weren't doing any good. They were just taking things from the property, not helping it. And I have actually spoken with the owner and told him, and he basically told me that there was nothing he could do about it. So I'm here to try to get this tore down because it's for the safety of my children, and not just my children, there are other children in the neighborhood that ride bicycles, and they run and play down the sidewalks and everything, and I just don't want any children or anybody getting hurt from this property.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may add to the situation here, I've talked to this young lady on the phone about this. There's people been going in this house for over a year now. They had old abandoned cars parked out there. They was going in the windows, and after they went into the windows, can you see me, Mr. Livingston, right? I just want to make sure you can see me. I thought you was having trouble. They've been going in and out of this house for a year now, going through the windows, and the last three months, I think they've decided that they could just kick the doors in and go in there, and they're sleeping in there at night. And eventually, what's going to happen, drugs is going on on that property. I've had numerous reports of it. We found needles. We've called the police over and over. The neighbors have called. And, you know, just in my way of thinking, in my job, there should have been something done a long time ago. There's no building permits or nothing being taken out on this piece of property, and there's been people going in there trying to do work with no permits. And once it comes to the city council, this far, the Building Department cannot issue you a building permit. So I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and move condemn this piece of property because it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. It's a nuisance to everybody. I don't want to see any little kids get hurt out there. There's people all during the night, and, you know, the neighbors would like to get a little sleep at night if they could, you know, out there. So that's my motion that we abate this nuisance, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Nation, and this is for the city to sponsor the high school regional qualifier fishing tournament to be held at the Gadsden Cousteau Landing, and this is on October the 16th, 2021, and the amount is $4,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing a change order number one for bid number 3452 for the sanitary sewer bypass abandonment project at Narco. This is the additional grant in the amount of $12,800. Therefore, adjusting the total contract with the Grading Excavation LLC to $144,100. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's Resolution 156, authorizing an extension of the special use permit for Verizon, as for unanimous consent considered.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. We have some department reports, board reports. I had asked Ms. Rossa to wait till today to give a report on the finance. Everybody should have had a chance to review.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on.
Yes, ma'am.
It is. Well, I have to say, David is a hard act to follow, so I feel like, I feel like I've been set up. I've known David for a long time, and the city is very fortunate to have him over the IDA. Does an outstanding job, and like I said, we're very fortunate to have him, not only in this city, but in this county. So last week, I did give you the financial statements for the month of May, and I was asked to present those today, so I will be glad to do that. The city is, I have to say, I don't think we're unique. I received a call from one of the reporters from ABC 3340. I don't remember what day it was. I think it was on Friday, and he was telling me that undoubtedly sales tax throughout the whole entire state of Alabama right now is up. Hey, and we are seeing that, and I know you have looked at your financials, and we are seeing that here in our city. I decided some information you do not have there on your financials, I decided that I needed to go back and look. You know, it's, it's easy to compare to last year, and the numbers look really, really good because last year, we were shut down. Lot of businesses, restaurants were closed down, and so our revenues were really bad this time last year. But if you go back to pre-COVID, let's go back to 2019 and kind of make a comparison of where we were this time in 19 to where we are now. And I find, of course, I'm a numbers person, so I find things to be very interesting. So if you look at sales tax in May of 2019, we had collected a little over $1.6 million. In May of this year, we have collected a little over $1.8 million. So we've collected a little over $200,000 more in this year than we did in 2019 at this same period of time. The difference is stimulus checks. In 2019, we didn't have stimulus checks. The federal government had not influxed our system, our economy with these, with checks. And I know for most people, they think, oh, this is just the greatest thing in the world. And is it, is it good for cities like Gaston and other cities throughout the state of Alabama? Yes, it is, because people take that money, and what are they doing? They're spending it. There is no doubt that money is being spent here in the city of Gaston, because like I told you, in May, our sales tax is up 12.3%. That's huge. Our sales tax was up a little over $500,000 just in the month of May. So people are spending money. There's no doubt about that. The problem with that is that when you, when the federal government puts that kind of money into our system, causes inflation. If you, if you go to the grocery store or you go anywhere, prices are going up tremendously high. I went and bought chicken the other day, and it was $5 a pound, I thought for chicken, you know? But you go to get gasoline, gasoline prices have went up. You go, people are buying houses at a record numbers. Housing is tremendously high right now. So prices have went up, and it's going to. That's not going to change. But for us, that's good news, because people spending that money, and we can see it by the numbers. So sales tax looks very well. Our occupational tax, on the other hand, is still down. A direct indication of unemployment still being high. That's going to change, and it's going to change soon, because as of today, there is no additional unemployment for the state of Alabama. Okay? And not only our state, but I think there are a number of states throughout the nation that the governors have decided to do this. So our federal portion of unemployment benefit has stopped as of today. So now, if you draw unemployment, you're not going to draw that excess money anymore. All you're going to get is the state, which is not that much. So basically, what that means is people that have not been working for all of this period of time are going to have to go back to work, because they're not going to be able to live off what they're drawing just from state unemployment. So all of these places and every, if you live in Gadsden, you know everywhere you go, there is a shortage of employees, including the city of Gadsden. So I think we're going to see that change, because people are going to go back to work and start back to work, and hopefully, a lot of these help-wanted signs, you know, including, like I said, the city of Gaston, we're having a very, very difficult time. The problem is, is that the wage level has went up, okay? And y'all need to understand, yes, we do know that we have personnel issues, okay? You can't solve all of those issues overnight, but you also need to understand that we're going to have a very difficult time competing for people, because you've got places like McDonald's and Burger King and those kind of places that are paying $14 and $15 an hour, and we can't compete with that. And the reason is because places like that can pay that in wages, but they don't have these high benefits attached to those wages. Our problem in the city of Gaston, and for those of you have been here a long time, I know Deverick's been here through this, Ben's been here through this, our benefits are a serious issue. You know, as an employee, I'm thrilled to have the benefits I have. I'm getting ready to retire, and I'm thankful that I'm under the RSA. But the thing is, is that it's expensive. It costs the city a lot of money. So when half of your package of personnel is benefits, it ties you with what you can do as far as pay, and we're going to have a hard time competing on the wage side of things. It's always been a problem that's going to continue to be a problem. Then, you know, but I looked back, because I wanted to look back, to May of last year, to May of this year, we only had 31. We had laid off almost all of our seasonal and non-full-time employees during the pandemic last year. We only had 31 seasonal and non-full-time employees at the end of May of last year. The end of May this year, we have 180. So we have hired 150 non-full-time seasonal people, which a lot of our departments cannot survive without having those people. The business license side, it is what it is. That's not going to change. We have a huge loss there. We've already been through business license season, so that's not going to go away. That number's going to wind up in a huge loss this year. The good news is, is that next year, when we go through business license season, our business license number should be way up, because everybody's sales are way up, and the license is based off of their, off of their gross sales number. So, so business licenses next year should be much, much more than they were this year, and we should make up for that difference. The one area that's really doing well is recreational services. They're busy. They have a lot going on in their department. They do have a lack of employees. You know, they need more, for sure. But they're, you know, they're open, they're going full force, and we're thankful for that, because there's a lot of revenue that is generated through Park and Recs Department and having our facilities open. And so they're making up and kind of closing that gap with our losses in occupational tax and our losses in business license. So overall, we're doing excellent. We're doing well. Our overall revenue is up about 5.3% right now. We've collected almost $2 million more at this point than we did this time last year, and so we're standing and doing well. There's a lot to be done. There's a lot of talk about the American Rescue Plan money. I assure you that I have been in more Zoom meetings and calls and emails than I really want to be. I have I have spent and already dedicated a large portion of time trying to educate myself because I will make sure that this money is handled correctly. It is $24 million, of which we have received half of it at this point. The next half will come in a year if we get the second half. But they, but there is a plan. I've already received plans from some other cities. City of Birmingham, Prattville, a number of cities already have plans in place that they're looking to get approved. We are working on a plan. There's a lot of effort that has already went into this and we'll have to continue to go into it. It's not something that we're taking lightly. I assure you at all, we're not taking this lightly. We know the responsibility that goes on with this and so we are working very diligently on that. I ended my report in the month of May that you have in your hand. I ended it with a statement that says, "The Bible says that without a vision, the people perish." You have to have a vision. You have to have a vision. This city has to have a vision. Where are we going to go in the future? You know, and there again, I'm not going to be here much longer, hopefully, but there again, I still want to see the city prosper. I want to see the city grow. I want to see great things happen for the city of Gaston. I've worked, I have dedicated my life for 20 something years, I've given of my life to this place and, you know, and so it's important to me. We have worked very hard to be financially secure, of which we are, and that's something that we all should be very proud of. And so there's good things that are going to happen and good things that we're going to see happen here, I think, within the next year. There's a lot of decisions that still have to be made, a lot of work to be done. And so I hope that we can all stay united and let's prosper our city as much as we can. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
You always do.
Are you able to work on the bond for the board education or are you still in the American Rescue Plan?
I have not, I'm no. The answer's no.
Well, will you, will we?
Will I?
Well, not just you, the city.
Not anytime soon. You know, I said, this, this American Rescue Plan is something, we have to get a plan in place. There's going to be a lot, I don't think anybody understands, you know, when, how much work there is involved in it. The interim final rule is about this thick. Is Robert still in here? It's about this thick, isn't it, Robert, at least? Yes, sir.
Hey, I have a copy of it here.
Yes, yes ma'am. There's, there's so much involved in that. Because we were considered a metro city, the funding that we received has nothing to do with the size city that we are. It's because we have a HUD grant is the reason we got a direct impact of that money. In other words, we're not having to go through the state of Alabama to get our funding. Because we had a HUD grant, we were considered a metro city. So they just automatically, and listen, I'm going to tell you something. I've told people and I'm going to tell y'all. I feel very, very, if y'all only knew what I had to go through for the city of Gaston to get that direct payment. I was questioned beyond questioned by people from the U.S. Treasury. I had to show my passport. I had to show my driving license. I had to show my birth certificate. I had to show and prove who I was to the U.S. Treasury. My name is all over those documents. I'm the only person that has direct assets to those funds. So if you think I take it lightly, you need to second think. Because I do not take it lightly. And so I'm going to make sure, I don't care what is being said. This here girl is going to make sure that that, those funding, it's handled correctly, it's handled properly. It's in a fund of its own where it is segregated. I will be able to tell you wherever a penny of that money goes when it's all said and done. So I cannot explain and begin to explain to you how much time I have already invested in this. I'm talking about it's consuming my time and I have other things to do. I'm still having to basically, you know, run a seat. I have lots of other jobs to do. So to say, to tell you, Mr. Worthy, that I can spend some time on that issue right now. I'll be honest with you, it's not important to me at this point and I do not have the time to do that. I just don't. I can't.
So saving a million dollars over the life of the loan is not important to you?
It's a million dollars, but...
We could use that and so is the Senate Board of Education.
I mean, yeah. I know, I know how much time goes into refunding a bond issue as well. I've done many of them. It's also very, very time consuming. I'm just one person and I'm telling you, I can't do all of that. I don't have the time of the day to do it. And right now, this American Rescue Act is top of the agenda. It has to be. We are required, our first report is due to the U.S. Treasury in July. So, you know, there's reporting involved in it. I don't think y'all have a clue what I was involved in this. And I know everybody thinks it's great. We got $24 million. Yeah, I guess that's great. But, but I'm beginning to think, I'm the very person that said, let's just send it back. You know, let's just send it back. It's more trouble than it's worth to me. So, so anyway, and I, and y'all know me well, I'll do my job and I'll, I'll do what it's expected of me, but I can only do so much.
Any other questions?
Ms. Rossa, what's the percentage of our $50 million budget now that goes to salaries?
To personnel, to salaries or to salary benefits? Personnel?
Personnel, yeah.
A little over 70%.
So we're operating really, the city on 30%?
That's correct.
Years ago, I can't remember how many years ago, we did some kind of study and it said we was top heavy in supervision. Do you remember that?
Yes, sir, I do.
What, do you remember the number of supervisors we were supposed to have compared to the number of supervision we have now?
Well, those numbers have changed drastically over the year because that study was done right after Mayor Gotten took office. So you're talking about 15 years ago. And our staffing levels have increased tremendously over the 15 years, even on the top side. So, so those numbers really would not even, you really couldn't comparatively talk about those numbers now because that study is so old.
Would it benefit us as a city to have another study done and see where we was? Because we've got people in public works, fire department and police department. In public works, them guys out there, I talked to a guy that had been there 29 years, nearly 30 years, and he was making $16.52, I think. You know, and he'd been there 30 years. And he had CDL licenses, you know, and I think in my heart, we need to pay these people enough where they can live and get by on, you know. He could not retire. His wife was sick and this man could not retire because he wanted to make sure when he retired, they both would have insurance because they couldn't pay the health insurance that the city had. His check would not, was not enough money to pay his insurance. And he had to work till he was like 66 and 10 months or something like that. But would it benefit us to do another study now as a city?
I mean, I guess you could. I don't know how beneficial that's going to be to us. You know, the problem is, is that there again, our hands are so tied. I'll be the first to say our wages are way too low, especially in the public works department, more so probably there and Park and Recs, which are our two largest departments. You know, we have a lot of employees there, full-time employees that don't make much over $9, $10 an hour. The problem is, is that, you know, our wages have stayed here and our benefits have done this. Insurance elevates every single year. I mean, y'all know that. At a rate that we can't hardly keep up with. I mean, I think in the past three or four years, our insurance has went up 7%, 5%, 6, and I think another 7. So it's going up somewhere around 6 or 7% every single year. Our insurance premiums are going up. Then on the retirement side, y'all all know that, our retirement, it's going to go up this next year. I already know that, you know, because we chose to give tier two employees tier one benefits and that's going to cause our rate to go up. And we have stayed right at that 20% rate that the city of Gaston pays into pension over the past, how many years now? 16, 17 years. So we're having to invest so much money into the benefit side that unless we have a reduction in workforce, which there again, you know, I think that's what those numbers kind of showed us back then, is that we had way too many employees. Well, I hear it every single day, departments saying, hey, we got to have more employees. We're shorthanded. And my, my departments are very small, but I have to say, my departments are short-staffed. You know, we're doing a lot more work with a lot less people as it is. So the, the answer for that, I'm not so sure comes in a study. You can have a study done and the problem is you're going to pay $10,000, $15,000 to have this study done and we've had lots of them done over the years. And I don't know that we've ever done one single thing that somebody has recommended in a study for us to do.
I was going to ask you that very question.
Not waste our money doing, having somebody to come in and do a study if you're not going to look or at least consider what they recommend for you to do. So, you know, we can do that all day long, but if the resources are not there to do it, they're not there to do it. So we understand, I assure you, I understand more than anybody that we have personnel issues and we have pay issues and things that we need to try to address. And we try to do some of that in every budget, every budget year. We do personnel changes and we, you know, we recommend things, but there's only so much there again that you can do. So I really don't know what the answer is.
What does 1%? I mean, I'm just throwing 1% out there. What would that add? I know that's just a small fee. I might as well go with 5%. What would 5% to every employee cost us as we are paying now on percentage wise to the budget? Say 5%.
Well, if you give a 2.5% raise, it's about $600,000 and something thousand. So 5% would be probably a million two. And the problem is, is that, you know, when you give a raise, it just, it just doesn't affect your base salary. It affects what you've got to pay into retirement, what you've got to pay into everything, you know, because all of those numbers go up as well. So...
What would it affect our, percentage wise? How much would it affect that?
Well, you know, if your personnel numbers keep going up, you know, the problem is you're going to get to a point where, where are you going to operate your city off of? You know, you can't, there are other things, just, I know you have to have personnel to run your city, but also you have to have water bills, power bills, you know, gas bills, gasoline. I mean, there's things, you know, you have to have to be able to operate the city. And you can't, we're, we're getting already to a high number. 70% is already real high. We've talked about this for years. You can't continue to let that personnel cost continue to rise. There is not a business probably in Gaston who operates with personnel costs being that high because they couldn't operate their business.
Lisa, out of the 30%, what percentage of that is already encumbered? Like for bond debt and things that, in other words, already spoken for?
A very high percentage of it, you know, a very high percentage. There again, we encumber about, I would say probably close to 20, 25% of that money at the first of the year with things that we know we're going to have to pay. You know, we encumber everything that's budgeted for electricity. We encumber it, you know, because we know we've got to pay power bills. You know, we have contracts, anything that we have a contract on that we know we're going to have to pay out. We encumber that stuff. So, you know, budgets are so tight, there's a very, there's no cushion there at all in anyone's budget.
So what would you say, I mean, for every dollar the city takes in left to kind of freely spend, like to pave roads and to do stuff?
In your general account, there's none of that. But of course, that's why most of that, most of your infrastructure, you know, projects and those kind of things don't come out of your general account, okay, which is where your personnel cost is at. That's why we have two capital improvement funds. And those two capital improvement funds, none of that can be used for personnel. That is all infrastructure cost. That's also where most of your debt payments are made, is out of that first 320 fund, that first 1% sales tax. So if it wasn't for the fact that we had that money to leverage against debt and infrastructure cost, we would seriously have problems. But thankfully enough, we do have two good capital improvements funds that are subsidized by sales tax, 1% sales tax, that generate about $7.2 million each. So that's roughly, you know, literally $14 million that we have, that we can use for the kind of things you're talking about outside of personnel.
And Christmas at the Falls money, is that, is that designated that it can only be spent at the Falls?
At the Falls.
So, so we can't spend that money on personnel costs or anything like that?
No, sir. It's not to be used for personnel nor operating costs. It is to be used for infrastructure project improvements at the Falls.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would it be better if we took some of the part-time people and did away with some of them and made some of them full-time? Would that balance that? I know it's going to be more on retirement and insurance, but would that full-time person be able to? It should be able to do as much as two part-time people, Sydney.
We did that this past year to a great degree because we were having to reduce down our non-full-time positions from 29 hours to 19. I know in public works, I think he gave up 30, I think it was 30, 31 positions that he gave up, non-full-time positions. And for those 30, 31 non-full-time positions, I think he got seven or eight full-time jobs.
So that wouldn't work either?
Nope.
I thought he hired 20.
And we did that not only in public works, but we also did that in Park and Recs and some other, other places. And, and that's something we're looking at. But there again, the problem with that is that your cost continues not just after this year, but it continues for now on because you have those benefits attached to them. So it just causes your personnel cost to get even higher.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I can't follow her anymore. I've got to go before she does. I think she stole my report. I'm Kery Payne. I'm the Director of Personnel and that's spelled K-E-R-R-Y, P-A-Y-N-E before you post it. And I just want to give you an update and make a few comments about our personnel. I've titled this report hashtag the truth. We are down employees in practically all departments, as you've heard. Fire, police, public works, parks and rec, all the way to the cemetery. I've been employed by the city for 34 years in various departments. I've never seen it as difficult to get employees as it is today. The pandemic and the programs as a result of it have been a major factor. I want the current employees to know that it is noted that you are doing more because of less workers and you are appreciated, especially having continued to work and do your best with a continuous negativity from an outside group. Also, let me say, I've worked with, with and for nine councils and three mayors over the 34 years that I've been here and there have been some good ones. But I'm probably most proud of this council body for not letting a group of people from outside our city intimidate or influence you into something that they are against. You represent Gaston citizens, which the leaders of the opposition are not. They have made it plain and clear. They want to decide our city's fate from afar. This administration, under Mayor Gotten, has done more for Nakalula Falls, the Coosa River, economic development and financial stability than any mayor in our history. And yet the opposition... yet the opposition, they fancy at a wall, take over Gadsden, call them what you want, they are blind to the fact. Because of the terrible pandemic, the city of Gadsden has the unique, unique opportunity to inject twenty-four million of American Rescue Plan, which has stringent guidelines into our city into the coming months. It'll be planned, obligated, and approved by this mayor and council with a recommendation from some of the city's brightest leaders. Keep in mind, most of the opposition will be from, well, the opposition. Senator Andrew Jones, what a joke. Now that's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm here to talk about the American Rescue Plan. I think we need to rename it to the Gadsden Rescue Plan, based on what I just heard from our finance department and our personnel. I guess I can take this off. Let me get a commercial in right quick, even though I have my mask on. I'm advocating that everybody take their shot, get that vaccine. It, it works. As a person who have had COVID, I've had my shots, almost lost my wife, who were in the unit for about four weeks with the COVID, and I understand that people got all this other stuff, but please, ma'am, and please, sir, take your shots. And the only reason I have the mask on is because it also protects you from allergies, even though I got my shots and I'm protected from COVID, but I've stopped sneezing as much since I've been wearing this mask, so that's why I have my mask on. Getting back to the American Rescue Plan, as Lisa just said, it's a hundred and fifty-one pages long, and, and of course, I'm not an expert either, but I've been meeting with the southeastern regional planning group who have dissected this one hundred and fifty-one pages, and they've broken it down to where we can, where I can understand it, and hopefully everybody else can. And that's why I came here today to offer the city to help. Lisa, you've got some help now. We'd be glad to sit down with you and, of course, give you our expertise as to what we found out about what the money can be used for. I think I also shared some stuff with Kerry too, earlier. But this plan, the government has made sure that this money be spent correctly and spent right, and I don't have any doubts in my mind that the city of Gadsden will be spending the twenty-four million dollars correctly and doing it right. And again, like I said, we're just here representing a number of organizations, 501(c)(3)'s, nonprofits, the Hope Unity Fund, which is a CDFI, which is a community development financial institution, and others to help spend, well, I won't say spend the money, but help set up guidelines for the funding. So we're here to offer our help, and that's why I'm here. Again, we thank you for that opportunity to be here, and, and hopefully, in the future, because there's gonna be some more money coming down, and we'll be able to also work with the city with that too. Thank you.
Robert, can you explain what the meeting Thirsty's about at the church? I talked with you a while ago about it. Somebody texted me last night about it.
Again, we've been getting our community together, and I think this one is gonna be dealing with some drainage issues and some other issues in the city. Again, like I said, I'm here representing a number of groups, and there are other small groups out there that are working, that are coming up with some projects and stuff, and again, we're gonna be coming back to present those to the city. But I think that's the one you're talking about, if I'm correctly. But again, like I said, we'll, we'll have quite a few, so just give us some time, and like Lisa said, they've got a deadline as to when we've gotta present those, and we'll be ready to, to do that too.
Thank you.
All right.
Come in, Councilman Reed.
Yeah, Lisa, I'm gonna get in muddy water here, and I'm just gonna ask a short question on the bond issue for schools. I thought they were gonna do the bond issue and get the million dollars themselves. My question is, if, if it's there, why aren't they handling this situation to do a bond issue? I know they'd have to use us ultimately, but I didn't wanna leave it like it was your fault that we're not getting it done.
Well, the, you know, it's complex.
Yeah, it is.
There is a funding agreement that is placed, you know, the Board of Education or the regional bond issues. When we first started this process, y'all remember, we had a, a board of education. I think the intent was that the board of ed was going to do the refunding, which means they should rate it, and then they're gonna take the savings, and I think apply the savings to the, to the bond payments and spread them out across the bond payments.
Right.
The last email that I received from one of the bond people that's trying to get the business, it was, it was totally opposite of that. It was the city, because they feel like the city can get a better rating than the Board of Education. Because they, I remember the Board of Ed has never been rated before.
Okay.
Board of Education could not leverage that just into the last couple of years, so they've never been to the bond market. So who knows what they're rating for? But they felt like the city of Gadsden's rating would be better possibly than the Board of Ed. So now it's more to the point of, they're saying the city of Gadsden would do the refunding, and then, you know, disperse the funds however we can disperse them.
Okay.
So anyway, so yes, it also changes the issue from a non-taxable issue, which is now, to a taxable issue.
Yes.
And then the other issue that is at hand is that when all of this started, the conversation started, it was to get, to try to get some of that, to get that debt off of the city of Gadsden's books. Well, this, working it this way does not get the debt off of our books at all. As a matter of fact, the only advantage there is to the city of Gadsden at all in doing this is the fact that Mr. Worthing has said, there's a million dollars that is on the table.
Yeah.
You know, and if we were sitting here and not just receiving twenty-four million dollars from the federal government, maybe the conversation might be a little bit different. But right now, that million dollars is just very small compared to the amount of work that it takes to do a refund.
And then who'd end up with the million? Okay. Yeah, that's good.
That's kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
And I have not had any more conversations with the Board of Education. I've not been contacted by the Board of Education since the conversations took place.
That was what I wanted, that's what I wanted to say.
So the Board of Ed is talking about this, and I'm, I'm not aware of that, and I have some very good contacts with the Board of Education. We have a very good relationship with them.
I just wanted.
Councilman Reed, if I, Councilman Reed?
Yeah.
If I may, just in response, you know, there, there are two things. There, there is some, an advanced refunding opportunity, so I, I think that's pretty clear, but the, the reason there is some hesitancy is because, as Lisa mentioned, it's not clear if we can remove ourselves of the obligation. And so that's one of the main reasons why there's been no movement at this point.
That's why I asked the question.
There's been some extensive discussion with our bond attorneys and, and other people who are, are able to provide us some technical assistance with this, but at this point, it's not clear if we can, if we can actually remove the city from the responsibility. So to Lisa's point, if you, if you're looking at it from that perspective, then you do have to beg the question, why do it? If you can't relieve yourself of the debt, then why? Why do it? I mean, there's really, there's really not a whole lot to be gained, gained there. And, and so, a lot of discussions that have gotta be had regarding that to make sure it makes sense for everybody. So that's kind of where, where, where we are with that. That's where we left off, and, and again, again, I may have just said what Lisa said differently, but, but it's, that's pretty much the extent of it.
Yeah, well, ultimately, it was leaving, it looked to me like Lisa just wasn't doing her part in getting this million dollars back refund, which is not right.
That's not true.
It's not right. There are a lot of factors involved, and you're correct. By the way, Buster, I enjoyed Monday. Barbara and I went out, got us two little hamburgers, sat down, and listened to jazz music about an hour, and those of y'all that missed it, come on out next, what, second Monday?
Second Monday.
Second Monday. Good jazz music. If you can tolerate Buster and Curly, you got it locked. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to interrate that I think everybody needs a raise, we just don't know how to come across getting it right now, it seems. I've asked everybody, and nobody can tell me how we can do it. We're top-heavy in person and supervision, we know that, but we just don't know how we can get the money to give a good raise. We've got the firemen, they're underpaid, the police are underpaid, Public Works is underpaid, Park and Recreation, there's gotta be some way, somehow, somebody can figure out where we could, where we could come and give a decent raise to these people. I don't know, maybe when the budget comes up, we'll all discuss it, maybe we'll figure out some solution there. I don't know if it's doing away with part-time people, hard full-time, or just opposite, I don't know. But I just think we need to pay our people more, especially those people I talk to. Everybody needs a raise here in Gadsden. Everything's going up, nothing's coming down, the prices. I just think we should be able to do that. And on another note here, I would like for people, if they would, if you see somebody throwing litter out of your, out of the car, please call the police, contact somebody about it. Our streets are getting full of litter. I mean, you'll, we'll clean up part of Alabama City and Walnut Park, two days later, it's just as bad where they've thrown the litter out. This city's better than that. We can pick up a litter, take something in the car, just put a little bag in the car, and if you got stuff from McDonald's, wherever you're coming from, you get through and you get in the car, put it in that bag and throw it in your garbage can. Guys, we're a lot better than just littering the city up. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson.
I'm gonna be really brief. That's one of the more bizarre meetings I've ever been a part of, I'll be honest. I will say, David Hooks, I appreciate you coming in there. That was one of the more informative presentations we've gotten on this entire subject up until now. Only thing I'm gonna say, guys, is we gotta figure out a way to like each other again in this community. I mean, I sit here and watch comments on social media where some people, not all, it's a, a very select few, but people are using race and gender to attack their opponents. Then I see members of this leadership get up and say disparaging things, blanket statements about the citizens, and just blanket general statements about the citizens. We have to figure out, how do we expect to recruit people to this community if we can't even get our own citizens to like this community? There is a role we play in leadership, and it's just incredibly disappointing to me to see that we've gotten to this point, to where we just get up here and take turns taking jabs at each other, and I don't know the answer, but I'll try to fix it, and I'll do anything I can. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Bag.
Thank you, Madam President. Sent an email on March twenty-fourth, and in that email, as most of you have probably read, that was the result of five months of fairly constant negative information and comments being made, and I'll just admit it, y'all, I just, I, I got mad, I lost my temper, and I fired off an email. Probably not the first time I've ever done that. I hope it's the last, but that's, not making any excuses, I said what I said, and so, and I, you know, it's, it, those things happen. I know I'm an elected official. When I took the oath, you know, this, I've done this two and a half years, I'm, I'm pretty new at this, I, I don't know everything, and so you're gonna make mistakes, and so that's just, I guess, all that I can say about that. It's, I mean, I can't get it back, it's just out there, and so I guess it is what it is. I'm gonna go back to what I've said from the beginning, back in November, when all this started, is I've said basically three things. I will not vote to bring anything that would harm Gadsden or the surrounding community. I'm gonna listen to my constituents, and I'm gonna do my own research and my own, and my own study, and, and I'm, and I'm doing that. There's been nothing to vote on, so there hasn't been a vote. I have not said that I'm a yes vote, I haven't said that I'm a no vote, so I don't know, it seems to be that there, it's a perception that I'm a yes vote, and so, you know, I can't control how people feel about that, but that's not, that's not the case. And, and I want you to think about something. This is one issue, and albeit, it's a pretty big issue. I know it affects some of you real personal, because you have houses and maybe even businesses out there by the airport, but in democracy, and where we sit up here, we are to do what I've said, listen, do our research and study, and then make the best educated vote that we can make, if a vote's ever presented to us to vote on. I don't wanna make an emotional decision, because those are usually wrong decisions. My email on March twenty-fourth, that was an emotional decision. I made an emotional choice, and so there's, there's my proof there. But here's what I want you to think about. What happens if you're on the other side of the next emotional decision? What happens if you're, if, if you're sitting out there and somebody's trying to raise up the emotions to vote on something that may not be pleasing to you? Contrary to popular belief, there are people that contact us that say they want the plant to come to Gadsden. That's just the truth. So there's two sides to this issue. Every issue has two sides, so what do we do as elected officials when every issue comes up? I, I think we, we listen to the constituents, I think we do our own research, and listen, I've read everything that y'all have put on your opposition page, it's been very helpful. I mean, it honestly has. I mean, I, I read all of that, and I, that's part of my research, but I'm also doing my own research, and I wish I could have a little bit of credit for doing my own research, because what happens if the next time I just listen to that group, and maybe you're opposed to what they wanna do, but they're being real loud and, and they're being very angry, so I just succumb to that? Well, that's not how, that's not government. That's not how government should be done in America, that's not how we should do things. So I agree with Councilman Wilson, we gotta learn how to get along and, and like each other. We have to listen, and that's what I plan on doing, y'all. I'm gonna continue doing what I'm doing, and, and, you know, I am for Gadsden. I've lived here my whole life. If any of you have ever run for a, a elected position, you know what it takes. It's not easy, and then you get, and then you win, and then here you sit. It's just not easy. Not making any excuses, I don't want any sympathy. I'll tell you one day personally where you can find sympathy in the dictionary, so I'm not looking for any sympathy. But there's a lot of city business to do, and I'm gonna focus on city business other than the rendering plant issue. We've just heard that we have major problems in our, our city. Police, down seventeen, fire, down twelve, they're both underpaid, we're losing officers and firemen to other cities. Edenwood, I don't know if anybody called it this weekend, there was five or six shots fired in Edenwood, that's my district. Person broke in the back door of an invalid's house, and there she is, she hasn't left her house in two years, and she has somebody standing in her kitchen that's being shot at. We've got problems with our debris pickup and drainage. The problem with the debris pickup is we don't have enough employees. You think back, the guy that does that big claw that picks up the, the debris, he now has to pull up, get everything set, get out of the truck, climb up there, do it, climb back down, rake it up a little bit, climb back up and do it, and get back. He used to have a helper, now he doesn't have a helper anymore. Cut those guys some slack, they're working pretty hard, and it's ninety degrees, and these aren't, these guys aren't twenty-four years old, okay? So, I mean, they're doing the best that they can do. Drainage is bad all over the city, on Wild Haven Circle at Norwood, my district, my neighborhood, drainage pipe collapsed. So there's, there's issues like that. I talk to Heath Williamson two, three times a week. I could talk to you every day, but I know I'm killing your time, so I don't, I don't try to do that, but, you know, we lost two, two point four million in our occupational tax when Goodyear closed. Just for an example, the Pilgrims Pride project will generate about eighty-two thousand in occupational tax revenue. We've lost two point four million, so we need ten projects the size of Pilgrims to equate what Goodyear meant to us. Our Water Works and Sewer Board, losing Goodyear, we think probably lost about ten percent of that revenue. It's a hundred thousand dollars a month that the Water Works and Sewer Board has, have, has lost. A few years prior to that, Rainbow City leaves Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board, and they get their water from Odenville, that was around ten percent, I think, of the they get their water from Odenville, that was around 10%, I think, of the revenue that was lost. So that's about 20% of Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board revenue that is not there anymore. So we have real challenges, we have real serious challenges in the city. We have $24 million that we need to figure out how we're going to spend. You know, we need to be focused on those issues as well as this economic opportunity issue. David Hooks made a presentation, and I hope that you go back and watch it again, and maybe even watch it again, because that's the vision, that's the way out for Gadsden and Nettawalk County. For the first time in over 90 years, we get to reimagine Gadsden. We've never had an opportunity to do that. Reimagine Gadsden the first time in 90 years. David Hooks has that vision, he's brought that vision forward. He has an 18-member board, and they're on board with his vision. So there are good things going on in Gadsden. Yes, this, our issue here today with my email and opposition and the city, you know, that's not a fun issue. I hope we can work through that, and surely we can do that. Surely we can work together as friends and with common interest to make it better for our city and our county. And the last thing that I want to say, Councilman Wilson hit on it, comment, you know, there's one female that's elected right now, well, that's not true, I was going to say one female elected in the whole county, that's not accurate. There's one female that's elected in the City of Gadsden, and it's Dr. Cynthia Toles. And she is pretty regularly discriminated against bringing into question her doctorate degree, as like, where did that come from? The way that she pronounces some words sometimes, and maybe the clothing that she wears, and maybe a hat that she might wear, those are all very discriminatory comments that are made toward a female, and that doesn't need to happen anymore. I'm going to stand up for Dr. Toles, and I'm not going to stand by and just because there's so much pressure that we feel from the outside that I'm not going to take up for somebody that needs to be taken up for. She and I have talked about it, she said, I was born into this world, Kent, I've dealt with this my whole life. Well, that doesn't make it right. So the comments need to stop, the personal comments need to stop. That's just, that's just the truth, that they just need to stop, y'all, that's not nice. You would not allow your children to make comments like that. And we don't need to make comments like that, because children are watching it, children are watching it right now, I've got it teed up. We've just got to do better, and we've got to be better. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams.
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes, Madam President. I was going to say something. I was going to let it go, but I'm going to say something. Now, I was prepared to talk about just what Kent, Councilman Back talked about, and you told me don't say that, so I ain't going to say anything. But the personal attacks, it has to stop. You can be against or you can be for, that's your opinion, that's your right, that's America. But all the personal stuff, and how can I say that to the opposition? And then we have leaders in the city to get up and make disparaging comments and stuff about other elected officials. We don't have to agree with what Mr. Jones is doing, but we all have to take, we have to be better. That's all I'm saying. We can't be negative. Love only wins out, hate doesn't. Love has to win out. So I understand, you have to be impotent and be able to put yourself in somebody else's shoes, so I understand. I try to put myself in other people's shoes and to see where they are coming from. I used to do that when I was a police officer. So, and we all make mistakes and say stuff we don't mean at times. I've had to go back and apologize too for some stuff I've said. But for people to just to be on Facebook and telling lies about you, and they don't even know you, and we all get tired of that. But then, after you make a comment to them, to let them know what's true, then they'll say something else, then they'll say they want to meet with you. You should have met with them at first, before you made all these remarks on Facebook about somebody and you don't know what you're talking about. I'm not going to sit down and meet with you now, I would have before, but not now. Now, let me get back to the, I'm going to always advocate for the Board of Education long as I'm up here. And the reason why I ask Lisa that, it's not only that the city would save a million dollars over the life of the loan, which the loan pays off in 2033, the Board of Education would save a million dollars. And if you're the only person in your department, Lisa, working and can do this work, we need to get you some help in there. Because you shouldn't have to do all the work. And the Board of Education is the one that's going to the bond market, but we shouldn't stop them just because they want to take over the debt. Now, Mayor Means, when he was in office, signed the paperwork to do the debt, and we should not renege on the debt. We should pay our fair share. It's simple, that's not hard. Just because you don't like the Board of Education, you don't like the school, whatever reason, and I know you say you don't have the time, but you got, somebody has to have time, that's a million dollars here for us and a million dollars for the school, a little over. It's a lot we can do. I know it don't seem like a whole lot with the 24 million we're getting from the American Reinvestment Act, but still, it's some, we have to be able to work together and partner with different entities, even though they may not do what we want them to do, but we still need to partner with them. And that's, whether we like it or not, that's the only school system we have in the City of Gadsden. So we need to make it work. That's it.
Mayor. I call for a motion to adjourn.